Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting for January the 22nd, 2013. At this time, I'd like to remind those of you in the audience that if you have a mobile device, if you will please make sure that it's on silent or vibrate during the meeting. This is a live telecast tonight. At this time, I would ask for everybody to rise and please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to welcome Reverend David McLandon from Rock Hill AME Zion Church to please join us for our invocation.
Gracious God, our Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for guiding our footsteps up until this very moment in time. And as we gather beneath this divine canopy of heaven, we ask for your guidance through and by your Holy Spirit. Lead us and guide us in the way that you have us to go, so that the decisions are made or information that is discussed will be good for your people. We thank you, Lord, for your blessings. We thank you for all that you're doing for us. Continue to bless this great county. Continue to bless our leaders as we continue to move forward. These in thy blessings we humbly and prayerfully ask, in Jesus' name, amen.
I'd also ask for you to please remain standing. We've lost a number of very important people in this community over the last few weeks, and so please join me for a moment of silence in remembrance of Marcel Millaway Upride, who was the first female county commissioner, Mara Eberhart, who was a town councilman in Mount Pleasant, and Bill Bab. So please join me for a moment of silence. Okay, Commissioners. The first thing that we have is the approval or correction of the minutes.
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next up, we have the approval of the agenda. There are a number of changes, as you can see, on the agenda from our work session meeting. So at this time, I would accept a motion to approve the agenda, including the changes.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, great. And we are going to start tonight with some proclamations. Let me get to the right page. First up, we have a proclamation for Black History Month. Bishop Roland Jordan has requested that we adopt the proclamation, which we have done in the past, and it reads, "Whereas Black History, African-American History Month is the observance of a special period to recognize the achievements and contributions of African-Americans to our county, state, and nation, and whereas this observance presents the special opportunity to become more knowledgeable about black heritage and to honor the many black leaders who have played a part in the progress of our county, and whereas such knowledge can strengthen the insight of all our citizens regarding the issues of human rights, the great strides that have been made in the crusade to eliminate the barriers of equality for minority groups, and the continuing struggle against racial discrimination and poverty. Whereas, as a result of their determination, hard work, intelligence, and perseverance, African-Americans have achieved exceptional success in all aspects of society, including business, education, politics, science, athletics, and the arts, and now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of Commissioners for Cabarrus County, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim February 2013 as Black History, African-American History Month, and encourage all citizens to participate in the educational and celebratory events honoring the contributions and accomplishments of African-Americans." This time, I would accept a motion to adopt the proclamation.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Next, we have a proclamation, which I believe we have a number of people in the audience today for this one. And this is the 100th anniversary this year of the Extension and Community Association, and the proclamation is to recognize that. And we have, let's see, Joyce Klutz is here, Extension and Community Association President. Would you like to? Do you want to? Let's see. Let me do the proclamation first, and then I'll get you to come up. Let's do that. Let me read the proclamation. "Whereas Extension and Community Association is organized in all of North Carolina's 100 counties in the North Carolina Cherokee Reservation, and whereas, beginning 100 years ago, Jane S. McKimmern worked to improve the quality of rural life and helped this state prevail during the Great Depression and two world wars by the formation of community clubs of volunteers to support the work of home demonstration, and whereas, from its modest beginnings, Extension and Community Association has grown to a diverse, wide-ranging, statewide organization of adult volunteers supporting the professional extension staff from North Carolina's two land-grant universities, North Carolina Agricultural and Technical University in Greensboro and North Carolina State University in Raleigh. And whereas Cabarrus Extension and Community Association views the family in all its diverse forms as the cornerstone of a healthy society and provides research-based programming to support families, and whereas Cabarrus Extension and Community Association serves to enhance the local community with educational activities and events that support healthy bodies and minds, and whereas Extension and Community Association contributes thousands of volunteer hours to Cabarrus County and its citizens to promote educational advancement, social connectivity, and community awareness, and whereas North Carolina Extension and Community Association will be celebrating its centennial anniversary formally on October 27, 2013, and throughout 2013, now therefore the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim the year 2013 as the 100th anniversary of the Cabarrus County Extension and Community Association in Cabarrus County, and urges all citizens to become familiar with the services and programs offered by the Cabarrus County Extension and Community Association, and to support and participate in these programs to enrich our local community and society." At this time, may I have a motion to adopt the proclamation?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. At this time, I would like to call on Joyce Klutz, who is the president of the Extension and Community Association. And I know you have a number of folks you probably want to recognize, too.
Yes, we do. But on behalf of Cabarrus Extension and Community Association members, we appreciate your acknowledgement of our very special celebration throughout 2013. Your proclamation mentioned the many volunteer hours our members commit to various organizations in our community, and Barbara has a large check that shows the value of our service in making Cabarrus County a special place to live. And it is $1,310,823 that we are valued to this county. Thank you, Barbara. In 2011, our members helped celebrate the Family and Consumer Science Agents' 100th Birthday, and with that event came an outstanding history book entitled, "Ordinary Women: Extraordinary Service." And our commissioners received a copy in 2011, and now we'd like to present a copy to our newest commissioner, Mr. Steve Morris. And we weren't sure, Mr. Burridge, if you received a copy.
Yes, I got one.
You got one, okay. Within these pages, you will find our volunteer organization was an integral partner with FCS agents throughout their history. And I would like to recognize our officers. Ms. Pat Withcliffe is our vice president, Ms. Debbie Mullis, secretary, Mrs. Judy Fur, treasurer, Ms. Pam Oaten is our FCS agent and interim Cabarrus Center Director, and Barbara Looney is North Carolina Quap extension state advisory board, and a number of our members. Okay, members, stand up. Stand up. This is just a few of us. Thank you so much. So, in appreciation for your continued support and interest in Extension and Community Association, we have a small thank you. And attached to the cookie jar is a very brief description of our organization and a taste of the beginnings of ECA. And thank you again for proclaiming 2013 the year of Cabarrus Extension and Community Association. All right, ladies, let's go.
Thank you.
The only bad thing is that I'm afraid that my husband's probably watching this at home, and he's seen this jar of cookies, and now I can't hide it from him, so.
I'll be glad to take it from you.
No, that's okay. That's okay. And the check, I want to point out, because you pointed out the value of your volunteer hours, but 64,732 volunteer hours, which is absolutely amazing. And Commissioners, I think we need to give them a round of applause. Next, we have a nice contingency that's lined up against the walls that we want to recognize tonight, and we have a, let's see, I need to call David Hampton, I know, there you are, to come up, please. Do you want me to give the summary, or do you want to? You can handle that.
I can take it and bring them up.
Okay.
If you would, come up when I call your names and just stand behind me. Alan Thompson, Gerald Anderson, Carla Billings, Will Cannon, Kara Clark, Kristy Davis, Brandon Fouts, Bill Jamison, Mark Kirk, Kyle Kaziah, William Long, Chris Love, James Manable. Wanted to bring these people up and tell you a little bit about a program that we implemented on April 1st of 2012. Cabarrus County implemented a dramatic change regarding the way cardiac arrest are handled and managed. Following research work done and carried out by the Cabarrus County EMS Cares Committee, a PIT crew-type approach was defined and roles were, defined roles were implemented. Members of the PIT crew include telecommunications, working out of the Sheriff's Department Communications, first responders, and EMS employees. Additional focus was given to the provision of community CPR training on top of this. Since the program's inception, the following has been noted. EMS has responded to 146 cardiac arrests in 2012. EMS has taught CPR to 1,176 people in Cabarrus County, and 55% of these cardiac arrest patients experienced a return of pulse, and this was up from 38%. So we saw a dramatic increase there. 18% of the cardiac arrest patients have been discharged from the hospital, and this was up from 7%. In best-case scenarios where there was a witness cardiac arrest with early bystander CPR and early defibrillation, 79% regained a pulse, with 49% being discharged from the hospital. Again, these numbers are just astounding. The personnel you see here are the personnel and EMS personnel that have participated in the successful resuscitation resulting in patients being returned home to their families. First responders involved were recognized in front of their peer group earlier this month at the Cabarrus County Fire Association meeting. So we wish to commend these personnel on their dedication and their excellence in patient care, and we would also like to thank Cabarrus County Government, CMC Northeast for their continuing support. With this support, these personnel will and have and will continue to provide cutting-edge emergency care to the citizens of the county. Okay?
Well, we appreciate all y'all's hard work, and it's nice to know that you're out there. Nothing personal, I hope I don't have to call on you, but I know that everybody in Cabarrus County benefits from having all of you when you're on the job, and we appreciate, David, everything that your department does and the service that you provide for our citizens.
Thank you. And Alan forgot your present, so.
We know where to find both of you. How's that?
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Okay, next up, we have informal public comments. I have three cards tonight, Commissioners.
First of all, I'd just like to say Jesus loves you. Cabarrus County in Concord is alive and well with social castratas engineered by the primarily Concord Police Department, and I'm one of those social castratas. Captain Scott Newell on the Concord Police Force, he broke the law and lied under oath to Judge Hamby on me in court. The same captain that had me charged with trying to start a riot prior to that on another ridiculous charge that held no merit whatsoever. This person lied under oath, told Judge Hamby under oath, this is what he said, "Your Honor, he's come into restaurants and harassed my family." That's exactly what he said under oath. I've never done that to anybody's family, period. Captain Scott Newell, the Concord Police Department, broke the law and lied under oath and wasn't held accountable. I complained to his supervisor, Walt Stofford, who told me to have a blessed day. I can't have a blessed day when I've got Captain Scott Newell with the Concord Police Department breaking the law and lying under oath in court and telling Judge Hamby, "Your Honor, he's come into restaurants and harassed my family." That's not right, and it's against the law. Now, Captain Scott Newell told me in front of the paint store recently, he came by and he made sure I was, saw his shiny new truck. Got no problem with that, us, you know, we're all trying to make it. But he wanted to make sure I saw his new truck, and he said, "I'm gonna sue you." And I'm thinking, "Why are you telling me all this? You need to be downtown taking out papers at the courthouse and tell them some lies while you're at it. You're used to telling lies. You're a liar." And I just, for the life of me, don't understand why it is when you're with a police like that. I'm not saying all police, but for sure, Captain Scott Newell with the Concord Police Department broke the law when he lied under oath on me in court and told Judge Hamby, a conservative judge, "Your Honor, he's come into restaurants and harassed my family." Now, it might sound like I'm making a big deal out of this, but I had to pay $360 in court on a cussing charge. The only person there was me and Captain Scott Newell, who we know has never said any cuss words, period. I said the S-word one time, attaching no threat, and I was charged and had to go to court and pay 360 bucks. Tonight, and every night thereafter, I'm gonna get my money's worth every time I come to this county meeting. I'm gonna let everybody know about the double standards.
Thank you. Next, we have Bishop Roland Jordan.
Good evening, Miss Chairman. Good evening, Board. I would just greet you in the name of Jesus, as well as the citizens of Cabarrus County. Well, I said, part of it's a good thing, have a man of color come and pray for you. That's good. I want the Lord looking for their goodness. Praise God. And I do personally want to thank Brother Jay White for coming and reading the proclamation for Veteran Day, as well as Dr. Martin Luther King Day, Zion M. Giants Church on Sunday, so we thank God for that. I think I got to see y'all in the parade, but I did see Brother Downing at Remoal Monday for Dr. King. You see, I'm a little confused. I thought it was a school board meeting tonight, but I went to the school board, I said, "No, it's here, county." You know, they say I have a couple strokes, but I'm still normal. No flesh getting away. But I do want to ask y'all to be encouraged of Bible Scotia. A man is a table, third of the ways. All of that education, praise God. And we'd like to see that school open back up. Not no elementary school I've been hearing about, but Bible Scotia, we could. And whatever y'all can do, I ask y'all to please do so, you know. If I was around when Logan was still around, I'd tell you, they probably open right now because I believe in doing what's right. I believe in civil rights and everything equal. I ain't always where I was supposed to be, but at least I'm getting there. Praise God. Too much racism around here, praise God. And God picked the right man, me, to take care of the devil. But I say, God bless you, and have a smile upon and give you peace.
Thank you, Bishop. Next, we have Jean Chandler.
Good evening. My name is Jean Chandler, and I'm vice chair of what is now called the Cabarrus County Senior Center Advisory Council. And I'm gonna just read what I want to say, so I found out that I need to make everything in writing. At our December meeting, a suggestion was made to the members to draft a letter to the commissioners to allow the parks' employees to have offices in the senior center. The same thing was initiated before and was voted down with a seven-to-four vote. As you all know, I was the most vocal in speaking out against this. I want to say that I have nothing against the people that are working in the parks. I have worked with some of them for years during senior games, and they've been very helpful. I and the majority of the seniors have been against the parks' takeover from the beginning, and let it be known. With the exception of two of you, the rest did not care what the seniors wanted. When the second letter was suggested, I was waiting on someone else to speak out. When they did not, then I agreed to go with what the board decided. Never did I say I agreed with going against the desires of the seniors in the county. I did not vote at all. Instead of a written vote like the last time, the chair asked for an aye or nay vote. I now know there were at least four others that did not vote either. Some people are not comfortable speaking out, and they just kept quiet but didn't vote at all. I understand that now, and should have backed down, should not have backed down for what I wanted to say, though. When I attended one of your work sessions, you did an aye or nay vote. Had I not been sitting there, it would have been impossible to know who voted for and who voted against, if you were just watching it online or on TV. This is what happened in this case with our meeting. The day after your work session that you conducted on January the 7th, I found out that you asked our chairperson to speak, and my name was mentioned. You then suspended the rules, which, by the way, should be legal, and voted without the public's knowledge that it was even on the agenda to be discussed, much less approved. Also, a letter was presented to you that the majority of the council members have not even seen, much less approved. I have gotten feedback from seniors all over the county who are upset with me and the other council members going against their wishes. Tonight, I want to publicly apologize to all of the seniors that this happened. I feel it was a political ploy for some people to get what they started out to get last year. I want to say I'm not a politician, and I thank God that he never called me to be one. However, I am a Christian woman who cares about the people and their problems. I want God to use me to help those around me. I know that Mr. Burridge is a strong Christian, and I'm sure the rest of you have some type of church affiliation, so I want to leave you tonight with this statement. I know that you will not answer questions from the public and that you discuss us in closed sessions, but just remember that God is not contained in a church, and he hears all the words and sees all the deeds that are done behind closed doors. Thank you, and God bless America.
Thank you. Let's see. Next up, we have the consent agenda, Commissioners. If you'll glance over the list, this is the same list that we had from our work session. So at this time, I would accept a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
I'd like to see us pull number six off of there. I don't want to vote for that.
So we will move number six to...
I don't care where you move it, long as I'm not voting for it.
Well, I'd need to go under new business, to G5.
Do we have someone to present? Because there was a young lady from Salisbury Row and Community Action that made that presentation, number one, and number two, as I didn't think, oh, well, anyway, that's, does she not need to make that presentation? So if we have any questions for her, or if Mr. Burge has any questions for her?
They already made it last work session.
I believe that, one second.
It really don't, I mean, it don't matter. I just don't want to vote for it, because I don't think it's a worthy program.
The action that we are requested is to acknowledge receipt of their application. We're not voting for or against them. It's just that we're acknowledging that we have actually received their presentation.
And I don't want to vote for it.
That we've received it?
They still gonna, it's gonna be approved regardless.
What we're approving is that we've received their presentation.
Right.
That's all we're approving. We're not approving what they're doing.
I let it on through.
No, I just want to make sure we understand.
Well, I mean, I don't approve of the program.
Okay, and that's, right. I understand that. That's not what...
Waste of government funds.
Our action tonight is to acknowledge receipt of their presentation.
All right. It's, they gonna get the money anyways, it don't make no difference. Eleven hundred up and across the country, all of it's been thrown away.
We just want to move, you don't want to move that to G5?
No, leave where it's at.
Okay, so we're leaving on... I mean, I just wanted to clarify what we're voting for, and which is just that they were here at the work session and made their presentation. That's the only issue in front of us at this point in time. Okay, so we're gonna leave it where it is. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Does that move?
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
I would ask that the minutes reflect Commissioner Burge's objection to the program of G, of...
Number six.
Number six, of F6, but be clear that we're only voting on that it was presented to us. Is that correct? Is that a...
I think so. That's good.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
All right, next, we have new business. The first thing we have is industrial development incentive grant for Simon Properties and a public hearing that we need to have. We have John Cox and Ryan McDaniels here, if you would like to present information concerning this.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the council, Mr. Downs, Mr. Cook, Ms. Smith. It's a privilege to be before you tonight. As you know, one of the issues on your agenda has been job creation and the circulation of economic base through our community, through new capital investment and through job creation. One of the most important areas in our entire county over the last 12 or 15 years has been the development of what is now known to us as Exit 49. Primarily, the investment that Discover Mills made there a long time ago, and now Simon Mills continues to hold there, what we call Concord Mills. With respect to the mall alone, there are over 3,000 people who work there. If you have the opportunity to go to Concord Mills virtually on every given day, but certainly over the course of weekends, Thursday nights through Sunday nights, you'll see thousands of people who are shopping there. They're shopping for all kinds of things. Some just go for entertainment, some just go for food, some go to actually purchase products. All of that benefits, the sales tax benefits, each of our communities. Concord and Kannapolis, Midland, Mount Pleasant, Harrisburg, each receive tax revenue every year because of the incredible sales volume at Concord Mills. Concord Mills was a unique project in North Carolina. It was certainly unique to Cabarrus County, and to respond to that, when the mall first developed, a unique set of incentives or grants were made possible by the city and county so that Concord Mills could come to Cabarrus County and become the kind of employment center that we all thought it would be. If you were to draw a small circumference circle, two miles, three miles, even five miles from Concord Mills, you would find that there are more than 10,000 people who work within that five-mile circumference now. All of us are committed to seeing the quality and the quantity of Exit 49 improved and grown, whether you're improving the quality of the destination by transportation infrastructure improvements so that traffic circulates more effectively on Morehead Road and I-85 and Speedway Boulevard, Bruton Smith Boulevard, and Concord Mills, or if you're looking to improve the quantity of destinations so that more people will come from North Carolina and the states that surround us to drop their disposable income off in Cabarrus County on any given weekend, and then when the weekend is over, they'll check out of our hotels, and they'll take themselves and their children home with us, with themselves, and we will reap the benefit. And so it's with that as a background that I come before you tonight to ask for an incentive grant for Simon. Simon is the developer, the owner of Concord Mills. This grant has as its background an attraction-style grant, something that we have not done before, except in the case of Concord Mills being an attraction when it first came. in the case of Concord Mills being an attraction when it first came. Again, if you subscribe to the theory that we want to improve the quality and quantity of the attraction, the destination, Exit 49, that gives you another understanding of why I'm bringing this incentive to you. Their idea is to spend upwards of $10 million to create a new attraction at Concord Mills. In return for that, they are asking for an incentive. It would be a standard incentive from the standpoint of the amount, which would be 85 percent. It would be a... For the length of six years, it would also be capped at $400,000, meaning that once $400,000 had been paid in taxes and granted back, the incentive would expire at that point. This particular project would create some 30 jobs. Most of them, a little more than 50 percent of them probably, I should say, would be jobs that would pay in excess of our existing average wage. And that is the sum of my presentation to you tonight. The EDC board has discussed it, and they did vote today to recommend this to you for consideration. And a similar proposal will be going to the City of Concord, asking them for their consideration as well.
Commissioners, you may want to turn to... I'm sorry. Page 381 as a change to your agenda to look at the incentive grant. The $400,000 is split between the county and the city. It is not all county, as a reminder. At this time, we need to call for a public hearing, so let me call for the public hearing, and then I will open it up to commissioners for your... Any comments that you have. So at this time, I would open a public hearing to speak about EDC Industrial Development Incentive Grant for Simon Properties. Is there anyone here to speak for or against the incentive grant? See, no one. I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, comments, please.
Have you seen the financial statement for Simon Properties?
No, sir, I have not.
You know what their net worth is?
Not.
I looked it up on the internet. I just wondered.
Is this the only location that is being looked at by Simon Properties for this attraction?
My understanding is no, that they have targeted our market, meaning the Charlotte Market. They have opportunities elsewhere. As you may have read recently in the paper, Simon is looking at, I think, a couple of other mall improvements or physical structures in the Charlotte Market. And I'll tell you, from a recruitment standpoint on this side of the House with respect to attractions, what happens at the interchange of 485, when that's complete, projects like this could easily end up in Mecklenburg County, and that revenue would accrue to their benefit, as opposed to us bringing projects to Cabarrus County and us realizing that revenue today. So, yes, it is a competitive project.
The attraction that is contemplated, is that something that our schoolchildren will benefit from?
I'm told that attractions like this in other places have increased attendance at the facility by more than 350,000 people a year, many of them in school buses, many of them during the school week. Yes.
Okay. And how many of these types of attractions are in the United States?
Two.
Currently existing?
One.
So one is currently existing, and this would be the second?
I believe that's correct. They have multiple projects around the world. It's an international... The attraction would be international in scope.
Saying as how if we were to approve this tonight, that we would be putting in quite a bit more money than the city, is there a way to change it from Concord Mills to Cabarrus Mills?
That's a great question, sir. You know, that's not a John Cox thing, I don't think.
Thank you.
Commissioner Meesmer?
Yeah. Well, most people know how I feel about the tax incentive. So, you know, certainly, I... You know, this country was founded on a free enterprise system. And, you know, being an American and a citizen of Cabarrus County, you know, I can't stand back and watch that go away. The fact that this commission board here is deciding on which company gets a subsidy and which does not means that the government is interfering in the private sector too far. Being a business owner myself, my family business, that has never received a tax incentive or a tax break, I don't see where it's fair that a governing body can decide which company gets a tax break or a tax incentive or not. And as I said, I think this is government getting too involved in the private sector. And unfortunately, we're seeing more and more of that these days with the local, the state, or the federal government. I know in the past few days, our family business has received a bill from the federal government, and the bill is for monies that was borrowed by the state government to pay unemployment compensation. The state borrowed $2.5 billion from the federal government and cannot repay that money. So now, the business owners are having to pay that back, and I didn't make that decision. Our state elected officials made that decision. However, I'm being penalized on that. Our bill's thousands of dollars, and this is only hurting business. You know, and as a young man...
Thank you.
Yeah. As a young man that is, you know, going to continue a family business and maintain that, it scares me that things are getting as bad as they are. And as an elected official on this board, I can't see where I could support such a tax incentive that, like I said, we get to pick and choose which businesses get that, and that's not fair. $400,000 for 30 jobs, that's a big government subsidy. And I certainly just do not see that, you know, fit. The best way for businesses to thrive, and the best way for an elected official or a governing body to create jobs is to get government out of the way. Whenever we have the government providing subsidies, it only makes things worse. And, you know, as you said, you know, individuals come to Concord Mills, individuals, families, tour groups come to Exit 49 area, and we reap the benefits. And we do. However, there's never been one instance where this board has said, well, because of XYZ incentives, we... These companies that have come to town, that we have given incentives, we're going to lower the tax rate on the citizens of Cabarrus County. That's not once happened. And so we may be reaping the benefits, but it's not directly helping the local citizens of Cabarrus County. And, you know, one question I have is, I believe there's not sales tax on tickets. Is that correct? Emission tickets?
In North Carolina, that's correct.
Okay. So really, we're not going to be receiving any sales tax from emission tickets. Now, if they have a guest gift shop, then potentially some money there. But, you know, I want to increase the quality and quantity of Exit 49 and make certain that that's a destination point. You know, I believe, just as you do, that this, you know, this is a great asset to Cabarrus County. I just do not believe that this governing body can, you know, directly affect it that much. It's the free market that takes that, and not a governing body. So I can't support the tax incentive, and that's it.
Well, you don't have to worry about the ticket tax. Eventually, they'll get one on there anyway, probably. So I don't support it at all. You know, government ought to stay out of private business totally, as far as I'm concerned.
Commissioner Morris?
You know, I think that I too am a business owner. And, you know, we say that... I could say that I've never received an incentive, but the incentives that I receive as a business owner from these type of projects is the prosperity in Cabarrus County. You know, and we can say that we have never reduced property taxes as a result of any of these incentives or businesses that we've brought in. But going through the budget process, and, you know, you've all been through it a number of times, certainly I have not, but getting ready to. But I can't help but believe that the property taxes that we've received from these companies that have come as a result of these type of programs have not prevented us from having to increase property taxes. And the last report that I got, this is through 2011, the property value of companies that we have incentivized or made grants to is $1,344,277,000. And they have paid through 2011 $178,268,000 in property taxes. Obviously, we have used those funds that have come to our county government. So in the... You know, when I look at the businesses, you know, if we're... When we embark on a project like this and we approve it, we're certainly doing that to attract this business to this county, but we're also doing a great service, in my opinion, to all the surrounding businesses and other businesses in Cabarrus County. It helps us to keep the tax rate reasonable in addition to the benefits that they receive. You know, the hotel nights that are going to be sold because of this attraction, the people that are going to stay an extra day in Cabarrus County, the other shops that they may visit at Concord Mills, the meals that they may eat in local restaurants, you know, it's a much, much larger multiplier effect than just looking at that particular project. And so for that reason, or those reasons, I would certainly be supportive of this, in addition to the fact that we often talk about, you know, do these incentive programs really help people make a decision as to whether they locate in Cabarrus County or not? And I would say that this is one that we could definitively say yes. I think that Mecklenburg County, downtown Charlotte would be delighted to have an opportunity at this project, and I dare say that they would, given the chance, incentivize them to a much greater degree than we have. So I think we're very fortunate to have the number-one tourist attraction in the state of North Carolina, in our county, and to have an opportunity to continue to expand that is a very good thing, and I'm very much in favor of it.
Following up on Commissioner Meesmer... Our Commissioner Morris's statement is that Mecklenburg... Charlotte Mecklenburg has been looking for this type of attraction for 18 years minimum, and they have yet to land it. They have yet to actually have it here. And I certainly agree with Commissioner Meesmer in regards to some of his comments that he's made, is as a business owner, we too have gotten the tax bill that we've got to pony up and pay in regards to unemployment taxes. And it's tough, but, you know, I'm looking at this as it is something that will keep... Well, let me... First off, Concord Mills has worked hard. Ray Saparoski and his group has worked tremendously hard to keep that organization fresh. Your business, you do everything you can to keep it fresh. Ms. Commissioner Morris's business keeps it fresh. You've got to get people to come. I mean, if you don't, then you're just standing in the water. So my hat's off to Mr. Saparoski and his group. This is just another way to do it. And I know I'm going to butcher this phrase, but the hoteliers are needing ways to have shoulder nights, I think, to cover, to get somebody, to encourage somebody to stay over that extra night. And although these ticket sales don't generate sales tax, those nights do. And those nights do a tremendous amount. And if I'm not mistaken, for every dollar spent on tourism, we receive $10 back. And when I say "we," collectively "we," not Cabarrus County Commissioners, or not the Cabarrus County, but it's a tremendous investment. And to... Not to look at ways to open this, I think, is short-sighted right now. I understand your personal beliefs. There's no doubt about that. But I think that this opportunity does not come along often. I think this opportunity is one that will be quick... That could quickly go into Mecklenburg County, not into downtown, but in another location, especially with Simon and their other... And the... I can't think of who the company is that they're partnering with in regards to developing a Tanger? Tanger, I believe, Tanger Outlet, to develop a property. So if that... If this doesn't come here, then it's certainly going to go there. And I would much rather have the opportunity to encourage people to come here, to stay at our hotels, and to spend money here in Cabarrus County, because we directly benefit from that in regards to our schoolchildren, is that we are able to pay the debt on the schools that we have, as well as hopefully get in a position where we can do a pay-as-you-go. So I would be... I would make a motion, unless Madam Chair would like to say something, to approve the industrial development grant, incentive grant, as presented in the accompanying documents between Simon Properties and Cabarrus County, and authorize the county managers to execute the agreement on behalf of the board, subject to review and/or revisions by the county attorney.
I've got a question before we take a vote.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion, a second. Yes, sir.
Okay. I know two weeks ago, whenever we were discussing this, there was a question regarding the personal property tax of what will be in the facility versus the property, the real estate tax for Concord Mills. Was that settled? I know there was a number of questions. I never did...
Page 381 has some information, which shows a project cost.
Right.
And I think until, as I understand it, until they get into it completely, that's not a hard number. That number may very well be higher.
Madam Chair, we did meet with your tax folks on two or three different occasions. I could not have brought this to you without them looking over. It's a much different project, so the numbers that you're looking at are actually theirs. So we feel very good about them.
Okay. I just want to make certain that they're aware there will be a personal property tax bill.
Yes.
I didn't want there to be a surprise. And, you know, with this being unique, someone renting the space who's wanting the tax incentive versus someone who owns the property. So it just seems like it might get tricky. But one more statement before we vote. You know, Commissioner Morris, your... The numbers that you had mentioned about the new businesses that come in and the value of that, and how much that has amounted to, and, you know, that's fantastic. That's, you know, that's all, you know, new taxable income for the county that we didn't once have. However, I wouldn't say that these tax incentives are the sole reason they do come to Cabarrus County. So it'd be interesting to know how much... How many of those companies would still decide to locate here without the tax incentives? And it disturbs me, you know, that, you know, this board has voted for tax incentive for Sail Guard before, and, you know, they've received cash upfront from the county and the city, tax breaks, and also incentives from the state government. And then, you know, I hear a few months ago, they're laying off 200 employees. So I don't like there being no accountability with that. You know, Corning, you know, received tax incentive, shut down, come back and got another tax incentive, and I hear through the grapevine that they're going to go through a round of layoffs. So it's just that having no accountability on that is very concerning.
Okay. Well, just as a reminder for our audience, that the way that this works is they have to pay their property taxes first, and they have to meet specific conditions that are outlined in the grant agreement. And then the funds are... The 85 percent is rebated back to them. But they have to... In this case, they have to make the new investment in the facility. They have to fully operate the facility for a period of at least 10 years. And, of course, it has to be the dollar investment amount. So there are some parameters that have to be met. We've... We have, not since I've been on here, but previously, that I know of, there have been some incentive grants that were approved that were never carried out to fruition because of one... because of one reason or the other. The company didn't follow through in one way or the other. Or it could be they didn't want us to really have all the information. Sometimes is the reason that they don't want to, they don't apply for the incentive because they don't want to have to give up the information of what their actual investment was. So they have been approved, and then they've not kind of gone through with them. But there are a number of things in here, as far as Simon goes, that they would have to do. The only comment that I want to make is that we need to recognize that Concord Mills and everything at that exit has made a world of difference in Cabarrus County. And if it's not updated, and if it doesn't continue to be an attraction and bring people in, then I do think it'd be pretty easy for somebody in Mecklenburg County to kind of usurp it, and we're going to end up with an extremely large piece of property that isn't very attractive. And this is a slight, the number of years is a deviation from our regular policy. 85% is still the same, but I think it's an attraction that we will all be proud of once it gets operational. And I do think it'll impact that area. So I think that's an area that we really do, that we seriously are going to need to look at and make sure that there's investments in that area to keep it fresh and to keep people coming in. It is the number-one tourist attraction in North and South Carolina, and that's something that, growing up here, I didn't think, whatever happened in Cabarrus County, that used to be just farmland out that way. So, anyway, we do have a motion, and we have a second to approve the grant. Do you want to say anything else? Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
The motion carries three to two.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Next up, we have, Suzie Morris is here. There you go. Just looking around the room for you. We do need to call for a public hearing. We have three different items that we'll need to call for public hearings on. This is a text amendment in the zoning ordinance. Do you want to give us some background?
Yes, good evening. The first text amendment is an amendment to Chapter 15 of the zoning ordinance. If you remember, this is where our adequate public facilities ordinance is housed in the zoning ordinance. We did receive our final decision from the Supreme Court in the Landville versus Cabarrus case, and Chapter 15 needs to be removed from the zoning ordinance in its entirety. So that is what you have in front of you, and you will need to hold a public hearing.
Okay, let's go ahead and do the public hearing. At this time, I would open the public hearing concerning text 2012-0003, text amendment to remove Chapter 15 from the Cabarrus County zoning ordinance. Is there anyone to speak for or against the text amendment? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, do you have questions or comments for Ms. Morris?
I'd make a motion to approve the text amendment to remove Chapter 15 from the Cabarrus County zoning ordinance as presented.
I have a motion, and I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, five to zero. Next, we have another text amendment. I'll let you...
The next amendment is actually an amendment to our subdivision ordinance because it also references the adequate public facilities ordinance. So we will need to remove Chapter 4, Section 17 from the subdivision ordinance. And again, this is just language specifically related to the adequate public facilities ordinance and its administration.
Okay, this time, we do need to have a public hearing. So I'll call to order the public hearing for text amendment, text 2012-0002, amendment to remove Chapter 4, Section 17, adequate public facility standards from the subdivision ordinance. Is there anyone to speak for or against this amendment? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, any questions, or is there a motion?
I have a motion to approve text amendment 2012-002 to remove Chapter 4, Section 17 of the adequate public facility standards from the Cabarrus County subdivision ordinance.
I have a motion, and I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. And one more.
The last amendment are some updates to Chapter 1, which is the general provisions section of our zoning ordinance. As part of our overall ordinance review project, it was determined that this particular chapter needed to have some clarifications as well as some typos corrected. Our attorney has reviewed the changes, as well as the text amendment committee, and it also went before our planning and zoning commission, and they did vote unanimously in December to forward it to you all for final consideration. Straight-through text will be deleted. Anything in red is new text, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Okay, let me go ahead and open the public here, hold the public hearing. This time, I would open a public hearing for text 2012-0004, Chapter 1, General Provisions. Is there anyone here to speak for or against? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, questions? Comments for Ms. Morris, or is there a motion?
Motion to approve, as presented, text amendment to Chapter 1, General Provision of the Cabarrus County Zoning Ordinance.
I have a motion, and I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, Commissioners, next we have appointments to boards and committees. Due to scheduling conflicts, Belinda Dublin has resigned her position on the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee. And due to a change of work schedule, Shayna King is unable to complete her required orientation. So at this time, I'd accept a motion to remove Belinda Dublin and Shayna King from the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee roster. Have a motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we have the Agricultural Advisory Board. The term of appointments for Thomas Barbie and Eddie Moose in January 31st. Both Mr. Barbie and Mr. Moose are willing to serve another term. So this time, I accept a motion to reappoint Thomas Barbie and Eddie Moose to the Agricultural Advisory Board for three-year terms ending January 31st, 2016. I have a motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Next, we have Cabarrus County Senior Centers Advisory Council. We need a motion to reappoint Tom Kuzel and Ella Walters to the Cabarrus County Senior Centers Advisory Council for three-year terms ending December 31st, 2015, and a motion to remove Frank Whitley, Robin Swearingen Jr., and Geraldine Foster from the Cabarrus County Senior Centers Advisory Council roster. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, and I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And next, we have the Council for Sustainable Local Economy. At this time, I accept a motion to reappoint Heath Ritchie, Francis Costner, Rod Townley, Ronald Long, and William Robert Higby to the Council for Sustainable Local Economy for one-year terms ending December 31st, 2013, and a motion to remove Wayne King and Sam Leader from the CSLE roster and to thank them for their service. I have a motion, and I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes, four to one. Next, we have Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee. I accept a motion to reappoint Peggy Yous to the Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee for a three-year term ending January 31st, 2016, and a motion to remove Mitchell Hagler and Diana Bingle from the Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee roster and to thank them for their service. I have a motion, and I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We have a number of reports for you to look over in your agenda packet. At this time, we come to Section J for general comments by board members. Are there any general comments by board members tonight?
I'd like to make a statement.
Yes, sir.
At our work session, I made a vote based on thinking we were being told the truth, and I found out later that we weren't. Had I known the truth, I would not have voted for the Parks and Senior, I would not have made the vote that I made. And I just want to apologize to the senior citizens of Cabarrus County. I did not intend on throwing them under the bus. Thank you.
Any other general comments by board members? Okay, we do not have need for a closed session tonight. So at this time, Commissioners, if there's no other comments that need to be made... I'm sorry, I did skip over. Are there any updates for any of the boards that we serve on? Do you have an update? Sorry.
Well, just a couple things. I met with the Library Board of Trustees this month. I think all of you probably received copies of the minutes of that meeting. They recently completed a survey of folks that use the library, and very proud to report that those came back, that 98% of those people were either extremely or very satisfied with the services they're receiving from the library. So that, you know, we spent some time at our last meeting recognizing our library director for her statewide honor that she had received, and it seems the experience of the people using our libraries falls right in line with that. So we're very proud of that. I also met with the Cabarrus Partnership for Children earlier today. And, of course, they're very busy. It's a complex organization in the way that, the things that they handle. One of the things that I was most impressed with was, over the years, I've served on many boards of volunteer organizations and other agencies. And this is the first time ever that I saw an agency come back with an audit report that did not request any changes at all. I have jokingly said that the accountants felt like they wouldn't get paid if they didn't find some little something wrong or make a suggestion, but they had no recommendations. So very proud of what those folks are doing also.
Okay, great. Thank you. Also, I want to make a comment. We do have numerous boards and committees that we'd like for our citizens to apply to serve on. The Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee has seven vacancies. We also have the Nursing Home Community Advisor Committee that has five vacancies. Region F Aging Advisory Committee has a position available. And I always like to call on you to talk about youth council. This has five positions.
Yeah, there'll be a slate of appointments next month, but I believe we're still looking for a position at Northwest, and then that should complete the council.
Okay. So if there's any students at Northwest Cabarrus High School, we would encourage you to apply to serve on our youth council. Okay, I do think now I have covered everything. Again, we do not have a need for a closed session tonight. As a reminder, we do have our retreat coming up on February 1st and 2nd. So at this time, I would need a motion to recess this meeting until our retreat, February 1st, 2013, at 4:00 p.m. at Camp T. N. Spencer.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, and I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Board of County Commissioners are now in recess until our retreat. Thank you all for coming tonight. Have a good evening.